Welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Needles, California, Tuesday, April 13th. Councils still continue to hold meetings pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 29-20, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. As a result of the executive order, in-person participation in the council meetings is not allowed at this time, and the council chambers are not open to the public. The mayor and councilmen were all here, so that doesn't apply. Call us, be in order, and take the roll, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Terrell?
Here.
Merritt?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Belt?
Here.
Longacre?
Here.
Thank you.
Can we give the Vice Mayor an excused absence, please?
I'll make a motion to approve excused absence for Doc.
I'll second it.
I think what I'm saying.
Motion to second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments pertaining to the executive session item? Seeing none. Executive session, we have one item, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, employee title is city manager. With that, we will adjourn to executive session. Welcome to the regular... Our city attorney, please report out.
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The employee title was the city manager. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Great, thank you. All right. We've already taken the roll call. We've given the Vice Mayor a excused absence. Would you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? Dear Lord, thank you for letting us gather and take care of the city's business. Please let us keep you at our forefront of our minds and help us make the correct decisions for the city as a whole. I love you, Lord, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ready, begin.
This is the United States of America and to the Republic, for which this nation, for
Approval of the agenda?
Am I making a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any conflicts of interest on this agenda? No? Correspondence?
None, Your Honor.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, please set your cellphones to their silent mode. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects other than those scheduled or requested do so at this time, when called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute timeline per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code Section 54950 prohibit City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. With that, are there any public appearances?
They'll have to unmute themselves if they want to speak.
Consider all evidence and testimony for or against modifying parking restrictions in the Needles City Code, Section 13-61, limited parking areas to our limit between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., adding P Street. Staff report.
Our mayor and council members, in front of you, we have ordinance 636 AC for two-hour limit on P Street for parking. It is April 13, 2021. Provided to you. It's being added on that street. As you go south on the P Street, there would be an improvement, so it's on Needles Highway. It's adjacent to the existing Needles Hampton that's being... Across the street from the Best Motel and the KFC. So it's a growing industrial commercial area. So some of the background, the Hampton Inn is actually being built, used to be on a vacant lot where the adjacent property owner used to utilize as a parking for various, you know, We're being required to add additional parking for this area to be created on... Include additional seven spots. There's a recommendation from the city planning team that a limited parking area for two hours be proposed from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for these spaces. This is what we're talking about specifically. So in the area in the red box, you will see that there's seven added right next to the Hampton Inn Hotel. And then this is what... South side, you're looking at the existing River City Pizza. So this will be, on this next side, you'll see what's going to be built, but just keep this in your mind. So as you look at this improvement on P Street, we will construct a new curb and gutter on the street, which will then take away an existing parking space on the River City parking lot, which he'll be able to put his, you know, trash enclosures and things of that nature. But there'll be a gain of seven parking spots at the bottom. And so the deal with the nine to six parking is so that individuals that are at the Hampton or in the additional commercial areas don't use up all the parking because there'll be parking availability at the Hampton, so for... And in the area. So we don't want to be able to... We want to be able to help the adjacent commercial business owners to be able to have some sort of parking for the public in that area. So our recommended action is to approve ordinance 636 modifying the parking on P Street to include two hour from 9:00 to 6:00 a.m. to p.m. at the site between Needles Highway and I-40 on P Street.
Your Honor.
Great.
Any questions?
Questions from the council?
Your Honor, I got one.
Go ahead, Zach. Use your mic.
It's going to be the same question I have with all parking that we build. No handicaps there, correct?
No, there is a handicap.
There is one in those seven?
Yeah, so one of the seven is a handicap.
Thank you.
Your Honor? Yeah. Tim?
Is he as part, especially on a Friday and Saturday evening?
I agree.
Why don't we just go to 10 then, since it goes at 10?
I like it, 10.
That's what I was going to say.
If I figure somebody is going to show up at 10, they might be showing up at 8 and then staying for two hours.
I manage that pizza street here. Tell you what, a holiday weekend, they're there until we say we serve them.
Then 10 p.m. is fine as well.
10 p.m.
Any more questions for staff? Hey, we're going to open it for a public comment on this issue. Are there any public comments?
Your Honor, I think there's a person...
Seeing nothing and hearing none.
Your Honor, actually, I think somebody was trying to speak. You'll have to speak up.
Hey, can you guys hear me or no?
Uh, faintly.
Hey, my name's Gary Lewis. I own River City Pizza in Needles.
Hi, Gary.
And, uh, hey, guys.
Hi, Gary.
Real quick, I don't want to... I've never wanted... Nothing for anybody, but I just want to tell you guys something. I've met with Pat and Rick so many times about this going in. We're going to lose all these parking spots because of the hotel, which is awesome for the hotel, but we're giving up half of my parking spot. I just would hope you guys would say, hey, just give us from 10 to 10. That's all I ask.
We're going from 9 to 10.
All right, well, I think, yeah, I think the motion's going to be from 9 to 10.
Well, we don't open till 10, but that's up to you guys. I don't... I've never done this before in my life, but me and Rick and Pat have met so many times about this, and I just, if we could get so many spots. But if you guys would do that, that'd be awesome for me, man. I don't know what to do, you know?
All right, thank you. Any more public comments? We'll close the public portion of this and bring it back to council for discussion of motion.
I'd like to make a motion?
I'll second that.
That we go ahead and approve this with extending the hours from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. for the two-hour parking.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments pertaining to the council items, a three-minute timeline per person has been established. All matters listed on consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor and any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. Three-minute timeline per person applies. Recommended action is approve items 2 through 17 on the consent calendar by a firm roll Anybody want to make a motion?
To approve warrants? To approve the warrants?
It's the consent calendar.
We have a motion, we need a second.
Did we delay?
Yes, for one minute.
Terrell, were you a second?
I'm not sure if I made the motion or the second, but I did one of them.
One of the two.
Yes.
Second.
I moved you.
Are there any public comments on 2 through 17 with eight being pulled? All right, seeing and hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'm ready. It's waive the reading and adopt Resolution Number 2021-16, approving Needles Marina Resort Economic Development Program allocation for the business located at 100 Marina Drive, APN 0660301090000, in the amount of $24,500. Do you have a question on that?
Yeah, are we... This is part of our economic development fund. Rick, did you want to...
Yes, the non-cannabis economic development fund. This, that would be the source of this revenue, and the funds are available.
Where is our... Where are we at through this one, on the amount of money left?
Well, I believe we probably have about $200,000.
Okay, just because of the possible grocery store one also, so where we are on our economic development, I think we want to also bring that back up. We talked about that, to make sure that we're all, put that back on the agenda on the terms of this.
Yeah, we are going to go back.
So we can go back over this program again?
Yep.
So we can get that agendized?
It needs adjusted.
Your Honor?
I'm ready.
Yes, sir.
His storage facility?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
He spoke. And us.
That worked.
Isn't this my job?
He has an office on the beach.
I do. So, all right, we need a motion for number eight.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Is that Tim? Oh, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, regular items. Number 18, to adopt a mission statement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we should get into the practice of doing this on all special task forces. You pointed a task force of the mayor and councilors Belt and to meet with the members of the development community. I'm recommending that you adopt as a mission for the committee to determine, have we... Do we have programs in place and are we practicing processes that affect development, such as streamline the development process, reducing red tape, decrease costs, facilitate new development, and create an attractive private investment place? And our estimate of cost is about $1,000, but it would focus... ...the matter's policy net as opposed to... Person. In Needles versus the other two states. And that's what we will do to try and address the attract private investment. If we are dependable, if we are dependable and timely, we create the best investment. So, but there are a number of subtasks that we'll work with the committee to better define, so they can report back to you. Are we there? Are we close? Are we not being successful?
Any questions for staff?
Yeah. Can we... Oh, hi. Can we therefore put on then agendas to have like every three months or so for that ad hoc committee to report back out then, actually? Because sometimes we get these meetings, yeah, and we do talk about things, but we're not putting it back on an agenda so we can actually talk about those items.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Belt, I think that's a great idea. We should have timely reports.
Correct. Just held us accountable.
Every three months, and then hope that within nine months, six to nine months, we... You'll be in a position of issuing a report.
Do we need a vote on this item? Or are we... Are we voting on this item?
Yeah, to adopt a mission statement.
I will move to... I will make a motion to adopt this mission statement.
Do we need a public comment?
Motion in a second.
Do we get a public comment, sorry?
Ma'am, is the public... Have any comment on our mission statement? Seeing and hearing none. We have a mo... Vote. All right, number 19, discussion to include in the 21-22 budget, painting addresses on curbs.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Patrick, did I give you those pictures of...
My curves suck.
Can you pop those up for me, please? A number of charitable organizations over the years have, and private organizations, have raised money by painting addresses on curbs. And, I mean, I just had mine done. We do require addresses on all buildings now, but I freely admit that not all buildings have theirs. The request by Councilor Terrell, which I'll let him explain in detail, is that the city pay for those to be done. So the... It is a public works project, which requires a formal bid process. And then my estimate, which I've been provided additional information, was I thought it would cost approximately $25,000 to do that. The person who's recently done this in the community thinks it's more akin to 17, but feel free to... So the policy choice to the city is AD1... Should the city pay? And Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, that's my report, and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Tim, did you have something to add before we begin the questions?
Yeah, we actually, when he came through, I sat down and talked with the guy doing it, and I was with law enforcement and fire response and the ambulance response, as well as even the pizza guy. There's some times you just can't find the house because of poor lighting, poor whatever. It's not as big as you would expect it to be on the side of the house. And in several cities I've lived in in the past, the city did provide this, where they painted the address on the curb in front of the house, in front of the business, if there was no curb, literally put it right in front of the driveway, just straight numbers, no extras, decorative flags or anything like that. In those cases, like on my houses and when I lived in Highland, I had an... You know, paying a... Just any reason... There's a lot of houses here and where I've got four-inch numbers, but when you're on the street driving by, those four-inch numbers are, they look like they're a half-inch big hill. I passed it six times trying to find it. Patrick's house is an exception. His are frickin' huge. But anyway, so in my opinion, this is something that the city should take on and get all the addresses done. They were done several years ago by other organizations. There's a lot of faded ones. They don't, you know, they need to be redone. And the current homeowners, for whatever reason, opted not to when this gentleman came My recommendation is this is something we should consider doing.
Wait, Tom.
I think that at this point, though, we're still... This is a lot of money, even if we're looking at $25,000, and then the upkeep on them, I know it's going to be a couple of years. We're going to have to keep redoing them. I just don't... I don't think that's the money should be spent on that at this point in time. I mean, I think every individual should make that choice if they want their curb paid. I just, I mean, $25,000 to paint their addresses?
No, it's a lot lower than that, actually. It's closer to...
Even if it's 17,000.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Tom.
I'm not...
The up...
The upkeep on it.
A year or so, and we're going to... Organizations that are doing this now or have been doing it. Either council questions or comments?
I don't.
Your Honor?
I need lots of playground equipment.
Is it possible to promote projects? Example, on the street that I live on, address is 6. On my... To the left of me is 506. I'm 526, and straight across from me is 509. So my address should not be 526. It should never have been 526. When trucks come onto my street to try and deliver, anything that's being delivered to the four of us that live in these four houses right here, because no one lives anywhere else on the street, they can't find... Mine's... Mine is painted with dolphins, but I do have my address painted, but trying to find someone, it isn't. So I think for law enforcement, for ambulances and other reasons, it's important that everyone have their address, but if we're not amiable to spending 25 or 7...
Has it been a...
If you got a comment, go ahead.
No, has it... Has it been a big deal? I'm not being able to actually find homes for safety, public safety, police, fire? I don't know.
I think the big thing for Tim is the pizza guy campaign.
Doesn't mean...
Pizza man know where you live?
I think he's got it down, but you know, every time and again, they hire a new guy.
Go ahead, Kristen.
I think it's a nice little thing to give to our... Back to our community, but like, like you said, it is quite a... It is quite a bit of money. And how many residences need it done, I guess, would be my question. And then like the people who have already just gotten it done, would they be, you know, get a... I don't know, that's the only thing where it's a little tricky, I think, but I like it for public safety.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, with what Ellen was saying, you know, would it be up to the individual owners of the house? We have a lot of absentee owners in this town. So I'm looking at it as a public safety. I mean, we can ask our sheriff here, how hard is it to find some of the addresses?
Good question.
Yeah.
Is it an issue?
Is it an issue?
Or, I mean, he's been here long enough, he might know where everybody lives by now.
Almost.
Do you know where to deliver his pizza?
Certainly, we want to be able to find addresses as quickly as possible, and having them clearly displayed, lit at night is a benefit, because if you're really dark out there and you're hunting around with a spotlight or flashlight, it's much easier to have it. I don't know what the city ordinances are related to that, but in other places, I know that it's been a city ordinance that it's a homeowner's responsibility to clearly post their numbers for that reason, for public safety, law enforcement, and fire.
In Rancho Cucamonga, they have the lit addresses on the side of their house.
Yeah, well, I know that what he... When he did my address, he sprinkled the reflect... But if you knew it, every address in this curb in front of it, you would look there.
And there's a number of ways to do it. I don't know what the requirements are for the city code, but I know in some places, it's the homeowner's responsibility. And it, like you say, in Rancho Cucamonga, they might have different rules as far as lighting requirements, size requirements. So it's not an inch big from the street. I think four inches is generally the minimum.
Are you having problems, sir, that you know of, with finding addresses in our town at night?
I'm sure it happens from time to time. It happens everywhere. Frankly, the easiest is to have, you know, I think, requirements on where it's to be posted, so it's the same place on the house and lit, so it's easy to find. Because when you're driving down a street looking for numbers, it's much easier when they're all lit rather than to hunt around with a spotlight or flashlight, and then you're distracted, your attention is drawn away from something that could be easily spotted if it were properly displayed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
What is our code on it?
The city code... Mr. Mayor, Councilor Longacre, the code requires that every street, every structure, house, business, have its numerical portion of the address on the building.
On the structure itself?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Mine is...
So that would fall under homeowner. Okay, thank you.
Code enforcement could go and enforce it.
Some do, and...
I have one on my fence, and I have one painted on my driveway. Tomorrow, I'll have one posted under my light next to my front door.
Ooh, I know. We want to be...
I like it.
Your Honor, just to let you know, there appears to be a Mr. Tim Major from Project Hope that's been joining in the meeting, and I think his... His connection's been bad, so once we get him back on, you may ask him if he has any comments, because he keeps popping in and out. I think he's in a bad location or something.
Yeah, he's actually the one who came through and painted the ones that were just recently done.
Well, that's his name?
Yeah, Tim Major.
Mr. Mayor, also, Ms. Musser Lopez had her hand raised a little bit ago. I don't know whether she's still...
Yeah, she does.
Still the...
All right, is there public comment on this? All right, is there public comment on this issue?
Ruth has on mute, Russell.
Miss?
Ruth Musser Lopez, Needles, California. But I'm not seeing Needles right now, but I can still hear you and see you because of the internet. And what, I can always see the addresses on my Google Maps and on my Google. And I never have any trouble finding a house by using my handy dandy smartphone. But even if it's painted on a curb nice and brightly, a car might have its tire in front of it and I would have a really terrible time seeing it. So in this day and age, I'm thinking that it would be who of our town to focus their energy resources and funding on cleaning sidewalks in first, especially on the street where the city office is located, E Street, where there's no sidewalks. If you get to the, you know, children going to school a couple blocks away, have to go over a hill, you can't see over the hill. There are no people across this subject at any time, no sidewalk. People walk in the middle of the street, but knowing that they're coming on the other side of that. And I'm going to warn you one more time. But I think one day you are going to be sorry that you put sidewalks in on that street. Then talk about numbers on the curves. Thank you. Another thing. Broadband would be very useful, especially 5G. Because you can get your, your house addresses much faster. And to, to 5G broadband and get your stocks exchanged faster. And we wouldn't have this slow internet offered by the, you know, without getting on the cable. Okay?
Thank you, Ruth.
Mr. Majors is back on the line, Your Honor.
Mr. Major, do you have a comment on this issue? I don't see him.
You'll have to unmute yourself, sir.
Try
Izzy?
There you go.
Hi, guys. It keeps muting me. It's automatically muting me. It must not like me.
Can you?
I can't even hear you guys hardly. It's just breaking up constantly. Everywhere I go to, it's just breaking up.
We can hear you now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was, I was being thrown offline, hung up on and muted multiple times. So I, I just kept calling back in. I'm sorry about that. I, I couldn't hear most of the arguments for or against the curb numbers. I just know there's a lot of cities I deal with that do it as a public safety and as courtesy to the residents every two to three years for maintenance. And but the, being that you live in a desert community with dark, you know, it's pitch black. The reflectivity is really high. And that's the whole purpose of putting them next to the driveway entrance of every street. So that way people leave enough room usually by their driveway for that little foot and a half number right there. So I don't, I don't know what else you guys were saying, but that's my take on it. I've been doing it 35 years and a lot of towns do deem it necessary as a public safety item. A lot of sheriffs and stuff tend to like the service because they're not spending time taking a flashlight, looking into various places on houses. Because you can't get a consistent lit address number on any house as well because every house is modeled differently and there's bushes and stuff like that. So that's, that's how curb numbering came into play back in the 40s and 50s, by the way.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further public?
I can't hear you guys at all. I guess we have, we have a bad connection, I suppose. I, I can't hear anything.
Okay, well, we can hear you, so. Okay, Your Honor.
Yes.
In the interest of public safety, plus and also giving back to the community of, you know, it's a small portion. It works out to about $7.95 per address, give or take. I think it's actually at 17,000. It would be actually less than that because we have about 3,000 addresses. But it's something I think that we should put out to bid. So, and see where we go with this, see what kind of real numbers there are. I'd like to make a motion to approve, to put this out to bid.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll give you your second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, if we're in discussion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Stakeholders for the rehabilitation of the Needles Lagoon and report to council by October 13th, 2021. I'm going to appoint Ms. Campbell, Mr. Terrell and Mr. Longacre to be that lagoon committee. Get on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City attorneys report.
Yes, Your Honor, just briefly, some of the items that we've been working on for the city are defending the city in the lawsuit filed by
Go ahead, John.
Okay. So one of the things that we've been working on for the city is defending the city in the lawsuit filed by Rio Buena Vista. We've also been representing this city in connection with over 25 receivership and code enforcement cases as the city staff is working to address code violations and clean up the city. We've been representing the city in connection with five illegal cannabis businesses and cases involving those businesses, representing the city in a sequoia matter involving the Lower Colorado River Supply Project, assisting the city on cannabis, legal issues, including review of live scans in connection with operator permits, advising the city in connection with the Brown Act, the Political Reform Act and conflict questions as they arise. And then Grace Garner from our office, who's a council member in Palm Springs and a lawyer in our firm, provided the AB 1234 training to a number of people that attended that event. And I know she's going to be working with the city clerk to get certificates of attendance out to those that attended. And then also assisting the city with Public Records Act matters, Public Records Act requests and responding to them, assisting and advising the city on public contracting issues and advising the city on prevailing wage issues. We worked on an amendment to the city's signed ordinance, providing advice on labor and employment matters, assisting the council with the annual city clerk evaluation process, assisting the city in preparing services agreements and a lease with the Chamber of Commerce in connection with the proposed visitor center at the El Garcis. And those documents have been drafted. Assisting the city in connection with real property transactions. And then also assisting the city in connection with the proposed electric substation. That concludes my report this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, John. The city clerk evaluation must have taken forever. City manager's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm, I'm pleased to report that the Jack Smith parking lot slurry seal project is completed. The striping's done. We have asked the contractor to come back and slurry all the way to the end of the park, which is another couple 300 feet. And we will get that done. I've also asked him for them for a quote, of course, parked on Little Highway. A sign that the county posted years ago to let people know that the, the section wasn't maintained by the county. And that's when all the residents out there were calling the supervisor. So we took this down and presented it to the mayor. And next time he's with a, the, one of the county supervisors, he can return.
Take it up to the payment, this is what it's like driving on
It is a wonderful, they are currently up on Washington Street. They have done all the waterline replacements on L Street. And they're just now starting, as of about 10:00 this morning, starting Washington. There are very few, there's only three water connections out to Washington because they're all coming off of the side street, so that area should go very fast. And then we'll turn left and go up Bailey. So we're, we're very happy with that. The biggest challenge is to coordinate the water contractor and the paving contractor. The, we also completed the repairs where we put in the new pressurized 12-inch line up Broadway. The trenching ordinance requires a, that that full lane be paved. Our inspector has rejected that piece because it has, it's not smooth. It, it has a roller, minor roller coaster effect. We think that can be fixed quite simply, but it's not yet ready. We have done, when the water crews go out and fix water leaks, which we're trying to eradicate, that there are various spots around town. They're doing those and putting on the final smooth pavement layer. And then also we will be doing the D Street Bridge blowout. That's a temporary repair up there. We will get that done very shortly. You had a goal-setting session last Saturday. We need to finish that. So I'll be polling you about a good time. I think it's less than an hour. We got right to the point of setting the goals. And, and we can, we can finish that off, I think, in an hour. So whether it is at the next meeting, coming an hour early or whatever, we can, we can try and, or maybe a special short meeting. But I'll leave it up to you. I'll poll you, or maybe the city clerk will about your availability and your preference.
Rick, since we did the initial one on Easter weekend, maybe we could do the follow-up one on Christmas. Just a thought.
Okay, and then the last thing I have to report is the visitors' center task force met with the, the preferred vendor and came to an agreement on all the terms and conditions. Those have been turned over to John and John finished today the two things. One document is the lease for the chamber to rent that space. The other is a vendor agreement with the chamber to be our visitor center operator. And they both have a five-year initial term because of the major investment they're making. And then mutually agreeable three-year extensions. Now, we learned from the 19th hole that we don't make those to the benefit of the less seat, less or, right, whatever. I got you. One of my last thing, so it'll be on your April 27th. What happened?
I didn't talk to
Okay, well, you had a picture of a sign. There were, there are a number of people that have questioned, just curious about, yeah, what, what is happening with the cannabis money? And this is a sign that shows there's this $3 million of primarily cannabis money at work. But we are also preparing a, a report, an in my opinion piece, for the mayor to sign about what is, what the city has spent that money on in the last five years. So with that, I would stand for questions or I don't know how to get
All right, council requests. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Terrell.
Okay, I'm just, I got a few things.
Councilmember Merritt, oh.
I, I want to thank you for fixing that little trench over on Front and L Street. And you told me that earlier that you were, you had some people working, owners of the property to get that tree trimmed. North Needles Highway, I've driven on it. It is nice. We should put the sign back up to show that
And it's not
our road is not maintained by them and it's a lot better than their road now. There's a light pole over here at the, at the housing authority. I want to thank you guys for getting that up. It looks awesome. I drove by there the other night. Very well lit. I'm, I'm happy with that one. Thank you. And last but not least, on the next meeting, I'd like to see if we can put as item number one, voting to reopen our chamber or council meetings to the public. And if we approve it, implement it immediately.
With proper spacing, correct?
With proper spacing and all the other stuff that we have to do, unfortunately. Block off every other seat or something like that. But yeah, there's already a few cities in California that are opening meetings back to the public. And if I had my way, we would have done it a while ago, but I don't always get my way.
The public is asking.
Councilmember
That'd be a good thing, too, that I don't always get my way.
Councilmember Merritt.
Yeah, just a few things. One of them is Bridge Road, which is like by, between like the Ed Perry Park Ball Field area and then River Road. The brush is over, it has overtaken one of the lanes. So, so that could be addressed. And also on Coronado and Aaron, I mentioned this earlier, but there's a two-inch opening where the, where the water goes into the wash. And it's clogged and it's also not big enough. So people, so somebody, I was, somebody approached me about that today, if there's something we can do about that. And also I was approached about the underpass. And I know we're still working with BNSF, but is there any sort of update on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Merritt. We try, I'm not going to say every day, but four or five times a week to get a decision out of BNSF. And we're just not getting quite. We designed it the way they instructed us to.
They don't want it open.
Nope. Well, but it's a critical link. It's a critical transportation link in this
Our overpasses getting eaten alive.
Yeah.
Eating alive.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just a little quick question about the underpass. I know that it was given instructions on a certain way to build it, certain materials. We've already paid for the materials. They're already sitting on site. Why don't we build it anyway, instead of waiting for them to give us the thumbs up that that, that may never come? At least if we build it, then we can say, what's holding you back? Open it. It's done now.
Art's on their property.
It, it's, yeah, it, it's on their property and that, just building it It's, yeah, it, it's on their property and that, just building it doesn't guarantee that they will open it because they have
sides aren't, both sides of that tunnel, that bar doesn't fall under, you know, side, correct?
I think, I think we can move it back to be all on ours, but where they.
Build on the one side that ain't on their property and at least show them what we're made of.
Yeah.
It's just sitting there rusting, right?
Yeah, we've already paid for everything.
Yeah, we've selected the contractor. The money's been set aside. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Merritt. Please finish.
And my last one is pigeons, just something, whatever we can do. I know we talked about it earlier also, so whatever we could do to kind of help the pigeon population. Not that I'm against pigeons, but it is, I know. It is, it is like definitely messing up our cement downtown and it's really taking a toll on the rooftops downtown. So especially El Garcis, which we spent a lot of money on, so. I don't, I don't hate pigeons, but, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, well, I, I just wanted to add that we, we have, there's a piece of property that is across the street from Katie House at school on C Street. It's up on top of the hill there. And there's a very nice woman that feeds the pigeons there, a bag of food about this big every afternoon. And I'm going to tell you, there are three families on Cibola, across the street from the school that I met with this week, that are absolutely livid and crazy about what's happening with the pigeons on their property because of all the birds being fed over there. So I, I don't, you know, it was suggested by, you know, that we could make an ordinance, that you cannot feed birds in our city. We have a river and ducks and families and children who love feeding ducks. We aren't going to do that. But there, I don't know what the answer is to feeding, you know, flocks of pigeons. We are not Prospect Park or Central Park, but they don't know what the, but I'm going to tell you that over there, it's really hellacious with the pigeon population, what's doing to the neighborhood, and the neighbors are going nuts. So I just wanted.
Councilmember Bell?
Um, two things. Can we get First Beach renovation actually on an agenda item to get that actually done? And money set aside on that, my grassy knoll. And, and the parks also, eventually to get, if we don't hear back, I know we just resubmitted for the three. So we should hear back probably within a month or two, right, if we get that, so then we can get that back agendized. Thank you.
Your honor, I have a few things. Your honor, I have a few things. A couple thank yous and a couple requests. I'd like to thank staff and Set Free. Second Beach looks amazing. With a little upkeep and some work in the off-season, it should stay that way. I'd like to see us start the tree trimming and bush removal on First Beach while the temperature still is allowing us. And I don't think there's more than maybe a day's work of worth, work there. But thank you. Like I said, many compliments on that beach. Weed season is on us, and even though we have a drought, we're still going to have weeds. Let's get our golf course another sprayer. Trash is an issue. Some cleanups, maybe think of tearing the litter fines in this city. We're watching people sit in parking lots and throw their food out the window on the ground. I, I don't say hand a child a upper on the ground. Trash destroying our cities. I'm sorry. We shouldn't be cleaning up after everybody. It's not staff's duty. We as citizens should take a little better stride. If you see something wrong, speak up. Where else? The creosote bush in the skate park, I've been waiting eight weeks. Due process is due process. Let's cut that thing down. The fences on the beach along the resort property. I asked to have them rescinded off the beach. It's getting hot. You're in litigation. And you're supposed to work, businesses and owners are supposed to come to this community and work with us, work with the beach, and in a month, it's going to be over 100. It's not nice. It ain't cool. Meet them in person. So, you know, think about it. It, it's pulling a fence back 20 yards and letting people enjoy that beach while you figure out if you can have construction on it or not. I have tons of complaints from the tribe on it, tons. And those are residents. Those are citizens. Those are citizens that voted for me, so I take offense to those fences. Last but not least, well, second to last, skate park, we're doing a new fence. I'll be reaching out to all local businesses. Let's rehab this 20-year-old skate park, get it painted, maybe get some bleachers, put up a sign that says, "Thank you from all the businesses." It's pretty simple. That'll be an email coming out soon. And last but not least, I would like to give my condolences to Mason and Mira Hood. They buried their father today. Thank you.
All right, and I just had, I had one complaint from a citizen. The walk-through tunnel down there under the 48th California Street, California Avenue, is full of trash and graffiti and maybe we can see if we can get that done. I'm not sure that walk-through is our responsibility. If not, Caltrans needs to get on it.
I'll clean it tomorrow.
That's it. Thank you. Have a good night. Meeting's adjourned.